Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, August 27, 2019. My name is Louise Chris and with us today is Alex Nagy, our Sign Language Interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to the Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are to be introduced. You can find a link in the Business dropdown of the city's website, PittsburghPA.gov. Click on the Legislative Information Center. From there, click the Launch button. This will take you to the City Council Meeting Calendar. Find the meeting for today's date and click on the Agenda. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Regular Meeting of Pittsburgh City Council for today, Tuesday, August 27, 2019. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burge.
Here.
Mr. Coghill, Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris, Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
President Kraus.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is it my understanding we have special guests to do the Pledge of Allegiance this morning? Do we? You're welcome to come up and lead us if you'd like, and we'll do your proclamation first. Would you like to do that?
Sure. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
You tried it.
Yep. Come on up.
Are we doing?
I know.
You can all come up. You can't. Are we doing Marty Langford? Is that the one you're here for?
Marty Langford.
Your, uh...where are we? Yeah. Can I can all come up?
Yeah.
Everyone here for Our Lady of Victory, please come up, and you can lead us in the pledge and we'll do your proclamation first. Thanks.
Great. Good morning.
If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, and a moment of silence, please.
Ayes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay. Thank you very much. You may be seated. So, our First Order Business is Proclaimations, and Councilwoman Kell Smith, good morning. Stay with us. Councilwoman, you're here.
Yeah, I've been talking to Darian about it. She's been...
It's not all. It's one project. You have glasses.
Bruce.
That's okay. Do you want me to read it?
Yes, and I can't because it's not getting locked.
I can't read. I don't know how to read.
No, but they get you.
No, they don't get you.
There is not a single thing in my project, in my district, that is already funded. None of it.
Why?
It's all...are you kidding me?
You didn't realize?
So, let me just start off by saying I forgot my glasses.
Was mine?
Oh, she has bifocals on.
Hey, they don't match, Ricky. They don't match.
She has bifocals on top of her reading glasses. So, anyway, I just want to say that every year we like to bring attention. My family's Lebanese. I think a lot of people think I'm Italian. Matter of fact, I'll tell you a real quick story. I was at an event once at The Overlook, and this woman said to me, I had a Lebanese food truck, and she said, "We don't like, you know, Lebanese food trucks. We don't like Arabs up here." I said, "You elected one." She says, "We thought you were Italian." So, ever since then, I made sure that I draw attention to our Lebanese family and our cultures, and there is no better place for us to gather than Our Lady of Victory. And without that kind of place to gather, I don't know what would happen. We used to. A lot of us lived on the hill or had our house. A lot of us were displaced when they built the Civic Arena. And so, a lot of people moved to different places, and a lot to the South Hills where the church is located. And a lot of our Lebanese people live in Anthony Coghill's district. But I will say that for us, it's...we're very proud. We're very proud of all that this community brings to the city of Pittsburgh, and you'll hear from the proclamation. I'm going to thank Erica for reading the proclamation.
Happy to. Okay. We'll hear from Pastor Raff. Whereas, the Lebanese-American family of Our Lady of Victory Maranite Catholic Church, located at 1,000 Lindsay Road in Carnegie, will be featuring their culinary achievements at their annual food festival beginning Friday, September 6 through Sunday, September 8, 2019. And whereas, Lebanese-Americans are known for their elaborate and warm hospitality, and it is considered rude not to offer food and drink to a guest. The festival will offer plenty of authentic Lebanese cuisine, including kibbie, grape leaves, hummus, lamb kebab, and much more. And whereas, also known for their music, the Maranite Lebanese-American community is one of the founding members of the Pittsburgh Folk Festival and brought us Casey Kasem, famous disc jockey and originator of American Top 40, and singer-songwriter Paul Anka. The festival will host Lebanese music and traditional dancing with Said Eko and band on September 7. And whereas, members of the Maranite Lebanese-American community have distinguished themselves in all walks of life, including the arts, business, education, entertainment, government, medicine, journalism, religion, science, and the military, earning awards for valor and bravery under fire. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Lebanese-American community of Our Lady of Victory Maranite Catholic Church for their commitment to family and faith and serving the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, September 6 through Sunday, September 8, 2019, to be Lebanese-American Days in the city of Pittsburgh.
You're here. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you. Congratulations.
We're going to hear from Father, who is the pastor at Our Lady of Victory.
Yeah.
And before that, he was a New York City cab driver.
I didn't know I talked about that, you know. Well, the pastor, pastor of Our Lady Victory Church means not the boss, it means the server. So, it's my honor to work with wonderful people. Our church really members are very dedicated and happy. And you know, we have a typical saying in Lebanese is, when you have two brothers, they fight against the...they fight with each other over the guest. It's a common thing. So, we compete over guests. When you come to see us, we'll be fighting who's going to treat you better. So, you really feel the hospitality. It's our nature. Proud because Lebanon, geographically located, is an open port for people in the Mediterranean visiting. You're really...if you come to our festival, hopefully, six, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, six, seven, eight, you really will be very much welcomed, enjoy the delicious food, and it will be on us. I hope if you can make it, we will treat you for that. Remember their faces, so.
That's not everybody in the city of Pittsburgh.
Only you.
We're calavized.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, we cannot...we're very proud of really Teresa Smith-Kell, she's doing a superb job in her position. You really make us proud. God bless you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Roma. I'm a parishioner, and just like to tell you just a real quick history of Our Lady of Victory Church and what it has meant to us. The church was founded many years ago, but more importantly, one of our past priests dedicated the church. He, at the time, the Second World War had broken out, and he made a vow that if our parishioners went to war and came back, he would build a church. Well, we had over 150 members go to the war, and every single one of them returned, which is unbelievable. What's more unbelievable is you've had Korea, you've had Vietnam, you've had all these skirmishes in the Middle East up until today. We've had people serve in every single conflict, not one person has been lost. So, that's a real tribute to what the church is about. And we're proud of that, and that's our history, and thank you for listening. And of course, we'd like to thank Mr. Nick Roma for his service to our country. He was a retired...he's a retired Colonel in the Marine Air Force. Air?
Marine Air Force.
Yeah, Marine Air Force, and he really have great achievements, and the list is long. I don't want to go through it. And like he said, our church used to be Saint Anne's when it was in the Hill District. But after the war, when all the soldiers came back victorious, that's when the priests decided to change the name of the church from Saint Anne to Our Lady of Victory.
I'm going to ask all council to come up, but I just...one more story about the Roma family. They're also the...Nick is also the father-in-law of Rashad Mendenhall?
Yes.
Who was a Pittsburgh Steeler and a producer of Ballers. And so, there's our family across the board is doing a lot of great things. If you recall, Sandy, the wife, their daughter, was the one who came last a couple of years ago and did the ballet dancing and stuff for us here on City Council and was an amazing performer, so. And she has a school too, right? Yes.
And her mom.
And her mom also has a school. What is it?
I'm retired.
She retired, but what was it?
Our Lady of...Ballet Dance Studio.
It was a ballet dance studio. So, we can talk about that, but everybody come on up, please, and join us. Thank you. Father, you got to open. Oh, and I'm going to add one last thing. Mickey, come here, Mickey. Come here, Mickey. I just have to add, Mickey, who is also our cousin, also ran Brookline Rec Center for how many years?
Forty-three.
For forty-three years she ran the Brookline Rec Center.
I did my time, and I'd do it again.
Aww.
Councilwoman? That's all right. We'll ask Councilwoman Kell or Strasburger or Mr. O'Connor. Marty Langford?
Mrs. Smith.
Oh, so we're not going to do Marty?
No.
Oh, that's good. So, then we're going to do Soul Food, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so do you want me...do you wish that I read this, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
All right. No, I do not.
I'm going to sit over here.
All right. May we have everyone that's here for the Soul Food Festival, please? Come on up. Don't be. Good morning. Pardon me?
I'm in the flash.
I don't know. Why? Good morning. How are you? Welcome. Don't be afraid. Come on over, and that way we'll get your camera, okay? All right. So, whereas this year marks the 400th anniversary of African-American arrival in North America and the celebration of African-American survival, endurance, and entrepreneurship since 1619. And whereas, in honor of Pittsburgh's first African-American food business operators, abolitionists, and entrepreneurship, Pittsburgh Soul Food Festival, a Soulful Taste of the Burg, will be held Sunday, September 1 in Market Square. And whereas Benjamin Big Daddy Richards operated the first African-American slaughterhouse and butchery on Market Street in the late 1700s, and who earned an estimated $200,000 selling meat to the government during the American Revolutionary War. And whereas, by 1794, Charles Richards opened and operated the first African-American restaurant and tavern on Front Street downtown Pittsburgh called the Negro, and John R. Pearl Press and brother Benjamin Pearl Press, who owned and operated the first African-American fish stalls in the Diamond Market, present-day Market Square, and the Allegheny Market House at 26 First Street. And whereas, John B. Vasson opened and operated the first city bathhouse, barber shop, and underground railroad station between Market and Ferry Streets in downtown Pittsburgh in 1834 and in 1838, Reverend John C. Peck opened and operated the first African-American ice cream parlor and original oyster house on Market Street, where families could be served with oysters by the can or otherwise, John Peck's business ad in October 1838 issue of the Pittsburgh Press. And so, now, therefore, be it resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the long history of African-American entrepreneurship and food businesses here within the city of Pittsburgh, and be it even further resolved that this Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, September 1, 2019 to be a Soulful Taste of the Burg Day here in the city of Pittsburgh. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Motion passed. Congratulations. Thank you.
Can I say something first? Can I say something?
Nope.
I'm going to make...I'm just going to say briefly that, you know, I've met B. Marshall years ago when he started doing the Juneteenth events and sponsored his events ever since. He does a lot in the community, and I'm looking forward to working with him on future things. I think this event is going to be a great day for the city. I think that I want to thank you for a lot of the events that you're hosting are all positive events. They're good things that are happening, and I'm looking forward to us doing more of those types of events. But I do want to say that, you know, he's a fierce fighter for the community, and yes, and that he has really done a lot on our side of town, building relationships. And so, I'd like to see that part continue. You're good at building relationships. I don't always like the fighting part. I like the part where you're building, because I want to say, on our side, it was beneficial. We're doing some events together that will help, that hopefully help the community, but it will...but without us being able to build those relationships, including with the police and on our side of town and the youth, we want to be happy to have some of these events. I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, would you like all members for the photograph?
Oh, okay.
Let's have all members for the photograph, please. Thanks.
Congratulations. We're going to do this one. I just did the other one. No, we didn't. You know, we tried to do it. Go one other time.
Yeah.
All right, thank you all.
Marty came.
Marty came? All right, then let's do it.
Come up, Marty. So, I have one more proclamation.
Do you want to read it?
And I just want to say, you know, in our side of town, we did not have a football program when I was first elected. We tried so many times to get a program started. It was ridiculous. I mean, to the point where at one meeting, we sat down, everybody was going to work together, they got...everybody got to the end of the hall. I got a phone call, please send the police down. Everybody was fighting. So, it was so bad that I thought we were never going to have a football team. Now, we have three, but we have one that's really huge and usually successful. They play their games. They make sure that they play their games in Shortchair City. They make sure that they involve kids from all around, and talk about a fierce fighter and advocate for the kids. Marty Langford is now the president of that organization, and as you know, this past month, he...they suffered the loss of one of their players on the field. But I've been wanting to give Marty a proclamation, not for just what he does on the field, but what he does off the field. He does so much in the community. At Langley, making sure kids can have bikes when they need bikes and pitching in, out of his own pocket so many times. That never says a word. I've watched him buy food for people. I've watched him buy shoes for kids. I've watched him get the community to pitch in for uniforms and for shoes and for other things. He got me to pitch in for uniforms and trophies. But a lot of people don't realize that he puts so much of what he does out of his own pocket, and he wears his heart on his sleeve. He'll fight fiercely, but, you know, 410, I'm ready to take him down. But we get along so great, but I just want to thank him for all the work he does, and I can't tell you enough about Marty Langford and what he has done for the community, bringing everyone together to make sure people are playing ball in our communities and the kids are taken care of, and that everybody puts the kids first. There's a lot of politics. There's a lot of game-playing. There's a lot...Marty's not having it. It's about the kids. And so, I really respect that part of Marty, that he's...he's never lost focus of what this is really about. And so, I want to thank you, Marty. But here we have a proclamation. Erica, can you come up again? Erica, I forgot my glasses today, Marty. I'm hoping they're in my purse somewhere.
Whereas...
Do you want to say Cookie?
Whereas, Martin Marty Langford is the youngest of four children born to Will and Glennie Langford.
Oh, no, it's Cookie, Terry's sister.
And whereas, Marty graduated from Langley High School, where he obtained the nickname Ironhead, and was considered to be a standout player in both football and basketball. Marty continued to succeed athletically while attending Utah State University Eastern and much later playing semi-pro football for Carnegie Bulldogs. And whereas, Mr. Langford was elected to be president of the Westside Mustangs Youth Athletic Association in District 2 and currently coaches the Westside Mustangs. He generously gives his time and often his own money to benefit children and families, recently helping to raise funds to provide children with new bikes. And whereas, in addition, Mr. Langford began a mentoring program in Pittsburgh-Langley K-8 to help improve the quality of life for students. He works tirelessly to assist the youth to distinguish between healthy and unhealthy choices and has worked to build a great working relationship between the city of Pittsburgh Police and the community. And whereas, in addition to his volunteerism, Mr. Langford is the CEO of 412 Entertainment, LLC, president of J.G. Trucking Company, and has a beautiful daughter named Courtney. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Marty Langford for his commitment to the Westside Mustangs Youth Athletic Association and to the youth of the city of Pittsburgh, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, August 27, 2019, to be Marty Langford Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
You're here. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Thanks, Marty. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, yes, thank you. Can you say something? Here's your proclamation. Come say something. Come tell people how...tell them how they can get involved with the Mustangs.
Um, I appreciate this proclamation. What I try to do with youth in the West End is just try to make sure, just try to bring them together, and through football, basketball, some type of sporting activity, and with our mentoring through our theater school at Langley, K-8, we try to just go above and beyond to make sure we keep these kids away from some of the temptations of the street. I'm dealing with kids from ages five to 14. Five to 10, you're okay, but when you hit that 11-year-old age to 14, there's a lot of mischievous things they can get into. I'm 52 years old. I've been...I'm a Westsider. You know, I played youth sports on the West End in the '70s and things like that. My biggest thing is I've been there before. So, giving back is the best thing, that's the best way I know to do it. Like Teresa said, two weeks ago, I lost a player, and that was one of the hardest things ever. A 13-year-old kid passing away in front of 160 kids. Never in life have I ever seen anything like that. I've been through a lot in life, but this, a 13-year-old kid, this out of nowhere, and we...the memorial service is Saturday. It was beautiful. We had Community Day, football games on Saturday. Everything was in memory of Jordan Duckett, the young man who passed away. And as far as the Westside Mustangs are concerned, Jordan Duckett's legacy will live forever with us. Thank you all. Thank you, Marty. All right. We all coming up? I want to come up.
We'll have all members, please.
So, just so you know, Anthony Coghill said he wanted to come up because he played against Marty in high school and ran down the whole team and everything they did together.
I wasn't a star player like him in my team. Madam Clerk, first, we have two to be read into the record, and then we have two wills
of counsel, and Madam Clerk, I placed mine on your desk there. Councilwoman Burgess, you have two proclamations to be read into the record, please.
Councilman Burgess presents, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Holy Rosary School for their all-class reunion, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August 31, 2019, to be Holy Rosary School Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman Burgess also presents, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend 2019 Women of Distinction honorees, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August 10, 2019, to be Women of Distinction Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second, please?
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next, we have two wills of counsel, one presented by Councilman O'Connor, one presented by myself and Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Councilman O'Connor presents, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages Allegheny County Council to swiftly approve the independent police review board's authority authorizing legislation and take any and all appropriate next steps within its power to see its creation through to fruition, and be it further resolved that the Council supports the ongoing efforts of those members of Allegheny County Council who are committed to the cause and respectful Democratic public safety measures now and in the future. And Councilman Kraus and Councilwoman Smith present, whereas, the members of the Pittsburgh City Council employ the Pennsylvania General Assembly as well as the Congress of the United States to pass within the next 30 days common sense safety measures, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the United States Congress to work across the aisle and enact critical legislation. He generously gives his time and often his own money to benefit children and families, recently helping to raise funds to provide children with new bikes. And whereas, in addition, Mr. Langford began a mentoring program in Pittsburgh-Langley K- eight to help improve the quality of life for students. He works tirelessly to assist the youth to distinguish between healthy and unhealthy choices, and has worked to build a great working relationship between the city of Pittsburgh Police and the community. And whereas, in addition to his volunteerism, Mr. Langford is the CEO of 412 Entertainment LLC, president of J.G. Trucking Company, and has a beautiful daughter named Courtney. And now for their, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Marty Langford for his commitment to the Westside Mustangs Youth Athletic Association, and to the youth of the city of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, August twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, to be Marty Langford Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
You're here. May I have a motion in a second, please? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Marty. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Oh, yes, thank you. Can you say something? Here's your procl- come say something.
Thank you.
Come tell people how this goes. Tell them how they can get involved with the Mustangs.
Um, I appreciate this proclamation. Um, what I try to do with youth in the West End is just try to make sure, just try to bring them together and through football, basketball, some type of sporting activity. And with our mentoring through our theater school at Langley, K through eight, we try to just go above and beyond to make sure we keep these kids away from some of the temptations of the street. I'm dealing with kids from ages five to fourteen. Five to ten, you're okay, but when, once you hit that eleven-year-old age to fourteen, there's a lot of mischievous things they can get into. Um, I'm fifty-two years old, I've been, I'm a West sider. You know, I played youth sports on the West End in the seventies and things like that. My biggest thing is, I've been there before. So giving back is the best thing, that's the best way I know to do it. Um, like Teresa said, two weeks ago, I lost a player. And that was one of the hardest things ever. A thirteen-year-old kid passing away in front of a hundred and sixty kids. Never in life have I ever seen anything like that. I've been through a lot in life, but this, a thirteen-year-old kid, this out of nowhere, and we, um, the memorial service on Saturday was beautiful, we had Community Day, football games on Saturday. Everything was in memory of Jordan Duckett, the young man who passed away. And as far as the Westside Mustangs are concerned, Jordan Duckett's legacy will live forever with us. Thank you all.
Thank you, Marty.
We all coming up? I want to come up.
We'll have all members, please.
So just so you know, Anthony Coghill said he wanted to come up because he played against Marty in high school, and ran down the whole team and everything they did together.
Madam Clerk, first, we have two to be read into the record, and then we have two wills of counsel. And, Madam Clerk, I place mine on your desk there. Councilman Burgess, you have two proclamations to be read into the record, please.
Councilman Burgess presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Holy Rosary School for their all-class reunion, and be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, to be Holy Rosary School Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman Burgess also presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby commend two thousand nineteen Women of Distinction honorees, and be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, August tenth, two thousand nineteen, to be Women of Distinction Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. May I have a motion in a second, please?
A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next, we have two wills of counsel, one presented by Councilman O'Connor, one presented by myself and Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Councilman O'Connor presents, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh encourages Allegheny County Council to swiftly approve the independent police review board's authority authorizing legislation and take any and all appropriate next steps within its power to see its creation through to fruition, and be it further resolved that the council supports the ongoing efforts of those members of Allegheny County Council who are committed to the cause and respectful democratic public safety measures now and in the future. And Councilman Kraus and Councilwoman Smith present, whereas the members of the Pittsburgh City Council employ the Pennsylvania General Assembly as well as the Congress of the United States to pass within the next thirty days common sense safety measures, and be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh urges the Pennsylvania General Assembly and the United States Congress to work across the aisle and enact critical legislation.
May I have a motion in a second, please? May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Both wills of counsel pass. That concludes the proclamation. Abstaining on the first one, Councilwoman Harris is abstaining on Councilman O'Connor's procl- uh, will of counsel.
Yeah, the first one.
Okay, that takes us into public comment. Anyone wishing to speak before city council this morning, of course, we'll have three minutes of which to do so. I would like to take this opportunity to remind those that are here to speak that our rules of counsel are clear when they state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may at this time or could at another time come before our council. We will not permit profanity, and we will maintain order at all times. I ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. When the green light comes on, it will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, it will indicate one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, your time will have expired. Good morning, Dr. Miller, welcome.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Belt Hoover and Shady Site. Global Intelligence Society, candidate for president, two thousand twenty, globalintelligencesociety.org. I think that a core role of mayor of Pittsburgh, president of the United States, and therefore a key responsibility of each one of those offices is to educate us, to acquire the best information and at the highest level of intelligence, and communicate this info intel to systematically and elegantly to the public and to the world. A high priority concern of Pittsburgh City Council is the achievement of Pittsburgh citizens in education. Pittsburgher created a rainbow of syllabi for the following university-level courses, which this citizen of the United States has taught two thousand to two thousand nineteen. Introduction to Global Biological Genetic Studies, Introduction to Global Brain Neural System Studies, Introduction to Global Psychological Studies, Introduction to Global Chemical Olfactory Studies, Introduction to Code Linguistic Studies, Introduction to Sociological Studies, Introduction to Global Mathematical Studies, Introduction to Global Musicological Oral Studies, Introduction to Global Economic Studies, Introduction to Global Geological Studies, Introduction to Global Geographical Studies, Introduction to Global Historical Studies, Introduction to Global Visual Studies, Introduction to Global Virtual Artificial Studies, Introduction to Global Political Studies, Introduction to Global Physical Studies, Introduction to Global Philosophical Studies, Introduction to Global Religious Studies, Introduction to Global Astronomical Studies, Introduction to Global Anthropological Studies, and Introduction to Global International Studies. Now each one of these courses offers an individual participant access, immediate access, to ten primary disciplinary resources, an introductory university-level text that is highly regarded in a discipline D, a book on globalization and the D, a text connecting the word global and the D, a text linking international and the D, a dictionary for each D, a biography of an influential disciplinary specialist, a journal of the D, a book which non-arbitrarily links the D to another D in a triad of disciplines in the material sciences, social sciences, and humanities, another D to the D book in the triad, and a book on the methods of the discipline. The Pittsburgher who created the syllabi for the Program of Education in the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary Incorporated in Pennsylvania and New York in Pittsburgh is Ronaldan Miller. I have done this. In the early two thousands, I became a member of twenty-two associations and presented my syllabi to each one of these disciplines, and all approved. No one else in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, the United States, and as far as I know, the world has accomplished what I have as a global educator.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Seeing no further speakers, that will close the public comment portion of the council meeting. Take us into presentation of papers. We will begin with Councilman Burgess, our Chair of Finance and Law. Morning, Councilman.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number nineteen thirty-five. Resolution, further amending Resolution Number eight sixty-three, by reducing and increasing various line items funded from the Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program and Home Investment Partnership. Bill Number nineteen thirty-six, resolution authorizing an agreement with various community organizations for operational administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city at a cost not to exceed one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Bill Number nineteen thirty-seven, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of De Apollonian Engineering Division of Ground Technologies in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-one cents for professional services regarding landslide matters. Bill Number nineteen thirty-eight, resolution, amending Resolution Number two fifty-three for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claim Act litigation by increasing the total cost from one hundred and ten thousand dollars to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Bill Number nineteen thirty-nine, resolution, amending Resolution Number six sixty-three for professional consulting services in connection with billboard tax litigation by increasing the total cost from sixty thousand dollars to ninety thousand dollars. Bill Number nineteen forty, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents to Kittleson LLC for professional services in relation to a lawsuit filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Police. Bill Number nineteen forty-one, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Cohen and Grisby in an amount not to exceed four thousand eight hundred and, four thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for professional services in connection with an employment matter. Bill Number nineteen forty-two, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and ten cents to Dickett, McCamey, and Killcoat for professional legal services in relation to police matters. Bill Number nineteen forty-three, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars to Robert A. Creo for arbitration services rendered in connection with Act one eleven interest arbitration. Bill Number nineteen forty-four, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Pharrell and Reichinger in an amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill Number nineteen forty-five, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in a total sum of six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars, thirty-two cents to Thomas Thompson Heffer for professional legal services in connection with a police matter. Bill Number nineteen forty-six, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Spillman Thompson Battle in an amount not to exceed three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents for professional legal services regarding a police matter. Bill Number nineteen forty-seven, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter two-ten of the city code, the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Highmark Health, Allegheny Health Network of Trauma Gaws, totaling an estimated value of twenty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Coghill, our Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, our Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number nineteen forty-eight. Ordinance amended and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title seven, six, I'm sorry. Conduct Article One, regulated rights and actions. Graffiti by amending the existing language of Section six twenty oh six to replace the Bureau of Building Inspection and the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to allow the Bureau of Police to prepare and send notices to clarify the process for removing publicly visible graffiti located on private property. Bill Number nineteen forty-nine, resolution providing for an agreement with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to provide administration and operating expenses, housing and housing-related supportive services to persons with HIV/AIDS and their families at a cost not to exceed one million, seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Bill Number nineteen fifty, resolution providing for an agreement with the U. Urban League of Pittsburgh for the implementation administration of the housing counseling program and related costs in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Bill Number nineteen fifty-one, ordinance amended to Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning Article One, by changing from P. Parks to EMI Educational Medical Institutional One Parson near the intersection of Fuse Street and Hammerslog Drive in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System. Bill Number nineteen fifty-two, resolution approving an updated institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine, Zoning Article eleven and Article seven for Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan dated July thirtieth, two thousand nineteen on property zone EMI, District fourteen, Ward, Council District eight. Bill Number nineteen fifty-three, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Heeside Cottage located at fourteen Cotoma Street in the Fineview Neighborhood in the twenty-fifth Ward of the city.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris, our Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lavelle, our Chair of Public Safety Services.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number nineteen fifty-four. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the public safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement with Wright Academy LLC for services in relation to police leadership training activities at an overall cost not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Bill Number nineteen eighty, resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution Number eight fifty-five by transferring five thousand dollars from District Six Neighborhood Initiative to the Housing Authority of the city for gym equipment and a fitness and mentoring program at Allegheny dwellings within Council District Six Neighborhood Needs. Bill Number nineteen eighty-one, resolution further amending Resolution Number four ninety-three by transferring five thousand dollars from District Six Neighborhood Initiative to the Housing Authority of the city, Allegheny dwellings, in Council District Six Neighborhood Needs, total cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman O'Connor, our Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number nineteen fifty-five. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the East Liberty Site Preparation Contract, Liberty Green located at one fifty-five Larimer Avenue. Bill Number nineteen fifty-six, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for twenty-five fifty-four Smallman Street. Bill Number nineteen fifty-seven, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for twenty-third and Railroad, twenty-third Street and Railroad Street. Bill Number nineteen fifty-eight, resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the A.J. Palumbo Center Edition Project, which will include major interior renovations and the building footprint enlargement. The building address is thirteen oh four Forbes Avenue in the first ward. Bill Number nineteen fifty-nine, resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the performance of certain work in connection with the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty CDBG program and providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed four million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, Council Districts all. Bill Number nineteen sixty, resolution authorizing a corporation agreement with the URA designating URA as the city's agent for administration of the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Home Investment Partnership Program, Council District all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, our Chair of Public Works Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kell Smith presents Bill Number nineteen sixty-one. Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and ATC Group Services for architectural and engineering design services related to the stormwater management and renovation of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police firing range at a cost not to exceed three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Bill Number nineteen sixty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the city and Buckhark Horn Architects for architectural and engineering design services related to the renovation of the former Thaddeus Stevens School for use by the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police Special Deployment Division for not to exceed nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Bill Number nineteen sixty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Duquesne Light Company in order to erect, install, and use that underground electrical system and associate apparatus upon the city's property at the forestry division on Stanton Avenue in Highland Park for the purpose of electrical and/or telecommunications services. Bill Number nineteen sixty-four, resolution granting unto Michael Johnson, his successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense, two exterior, two exterior steel trellis structure at the Pursuit East Restaurant in the tenth ward, seventh council district of the city. Bill Number nineteen sixty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement with Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Multi-Module Transportation Fund Program. Should the grant be awarded by DCED to provide funding for the South Twenty-first Street Complete Green Street Project, the grant proposal includes an ask of one million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, with a local match of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars to be contributed by the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provide for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two million, fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars for this stated purpose. Bill Number nineteen sixty-six, resolution providing for an agreement between the city and Crafton Bureau in connection with the paving of Ingram Avenue between Duncan Avenue and Studdin Street, providing for the payment of the cost thereof by the Bureau to the city, the costs associated with the paving of the Bureau's portion of Ingram's Avenue. The estimated cost of preparation and completion of the work, thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars. Bill Number nineteen sixty-seven, resolution, amending Resolution three oh one of two thousand eighteen to increase the funding amount of seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents in alter the funding source, now being further amended to increase the funding to accommodate a letter of, uh, amend, to accommodate a letter of amendment to the reimbursement agreement amount not to exceed a total of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Bill Number nineteen sixty-eight, resolution amending and supplementing Resolution Number forty of two thousand nineteen to further, to add further budget authority for a letter of amendment to the original reimbursement agreement not to exceed a total of nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars and three cents. Bill Number nineteen seventy-seven, resolution naming the Stratton Street Park as Andrew Joseph Kukuruda Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Hi, Council President, can I have a motion to waive, um?
Rules on Bill nineteen sixty-six?
Yes, thank you. She just told me the name and I just got her number and I couldn't remember that one.
You're welcome, Councilwoman, I'm happy to help. Uh, may I have a second on the motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Do we have discussion on the motion to waive the rules on Bill nineteen sixty-six?
I'd just say it's for paving Ingram Avenue.
Yeah.
It's a corporation.
Sure. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Seeing none, great. Bill nineteen sixty-six will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, our Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number nineteen sixty-nine. Ordinance amended to Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title One, Administrative Article eleven, Human Resources. Cable Communications in order to remove the Pittsburgh Cable Communications Advisory Committee and all mentions in city code. Bill Number nineteen seventy, resolution, amending Resolution Number four fifty-six authorizing an amendment to the existing rooftop license agreement between the city and six hundred GS Prop LP in order to extend the term through May fifth, two thousand twenty-three at a cost not to exceed two hundred, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. Bill Number nineteen seventy-one, resolution, amending Resolution Number eight oh one of two thousand seventeen, which authorize the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with AMCOM for a sum not to exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year for five years by increasing the not-to-exceed amount to two million, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Bill Number nineteen seventy-two, resolution, amending Resolution Number five twenty-six which authorize the city to extend a professional services agreement with Straight Grant LLC by a term of one year and an additional cost not to exceed thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and eleven cents. Bill Number nineteen seventy-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Fin-
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into a maintenance agreement with OPEC Corporation for Maintenance Services related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning workstation. Total cost would be a one-time payment not to exceed ten thousand three hundred and thirty dollars with three additional option years, 2020, 21, and 22.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive Rule 8 on 2019-1971 regarding the contract with AMCOM.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. We may have a second on the motion, please?
Second.
Second, do we have discussion on the motion to waive the rules on Bill 1917-- Seventy-one, I'm sorry. Okay, seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Seeing none? 1971 will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Next, the Chair has two sponsored bills. If I can take those first, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kraus presents Bill Number 1978. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the City and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors with the South Side PED at a cost not to exceed one hundred fifty-seven thousand sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Bill Number 1979. Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership in an amount of eleven thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for invoiced services rendered within the South Side PED charge, to and payable for the PED trust fund.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I ask a member to please make a motion to waive the rules on seventeen-- 1978 and 1979? This allows us to enter into our yearly expenditure to access the parking enhancement district dollars to pay for the Clean Team on East Carson Street.
Second.
Okay, a motion to waive the rules. And a second, do we have discussion on the motion to waive the rules? Okay, seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Thank you very much. 1978 and 1979 will also appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda as well. Then, I have two appointments. If I can take those next, Madam Clerk.
Bill Number 1974. Resolution Appointing Ronald S. Grizzano to serve as a member of the Board of License and Inspection Review for a term to expire August 31st, 2022. Bill Number 1975. Resolution Appointing Kelly Ware Sebrun to serve as a member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Harris?
Yeah, the same move that we do interviews.
Okay. Including Mr. Graziano? We know him?
I really don't think so, unless everyone doesn't know who Ron Graziano is.
Mr. Graziano used to serve as our Director of BBI when the department was known as BBI.
And a wonderful resident of Oakwood in my district.
And he--
And the hardest worker I've seen at BBI.
He also serves as our--
I should say, as director.
--construction manager for all of the new renovations at the Carnegie Library. Happy to bring him in if you wish, or not. Councilwoman?
If he'd like to come in, that's fine. It's up to him on--
Okay, so then we have a motion to do interviews on both 1974 and 1975? May I have a second?
You can't.
Councilwoman Lavelle?
I don't think he's going to want to come in, to be honest with you.
Yeah, it's his choice.
Yeah, and Councilwoman's saying it's his.
So then let's--
If it's his choice, we can't vote on whether it's his choice.
Right. So let's, if I may, let's just-- Let's remove that motion and make the motion only to be-- To bring in 1975 Kelly Sebrun in for interview? May I have a motion in a second?
Just a comment.
Sure.
She works for us.
Okay.
I'm not sure why we would bring her--
Where does she work, Councilman?
She's our--
Oh, Kelly! Oh!
She's our--
Kelly works for us. Yeah. Thank you, Councilman.
We have twenty-four-- We have full access to her every day.
Where? Yeah.
She's in the budget office.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm s-- I just didn't realize Kelly's name was Sebrun.
Yeah, she's normally in council, in our council.
Yeah, I looked over to see if things were all looking out of that way.
Okay, so then let's just remove both motions and let's put forward a motion to approve both 1974 and 1975. Have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Okay, and we have a second, please?
Second.
Second, and discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Motion's passed to approve seventeen-- 1974 and 1975. Lastly, I have a petition for a public hearing which has been found to be invalid according to our Home Rule Charter. Charter.
Council President presents Bill Number 1976. Petition from residents of the city requesting a public hearing before city council relative to awarding reparations for the black residents of Pittsburgh because of legacy of slavery, Jim Crow, and the continued systematic and structural oppression of white supremacy and economic injustice. The petition is invalid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter.
So, Madam Clerk, I need your advice in-- When a petition for a public hearing is found to be invalid, our action is?
Nothing.
Nothing? Nothing? We just-- Even to receive and file? Okay, then I'll need a motion, please, to receive and file. And a second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion to receive and file in a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? So moved. That takes us into unfinished business, and without unfinished business nor presentation of papers for final action, we go into motions and resolutions. I do have several meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 in our small conference room, council will enter into an executive session as it relates to Bill 1843, as that relates to a warrant. Also, today at 2:00 PM here in council chambers, we will enter into a cablecast public hearing as it relates to Bill 1908. It is to name the playground at Fairwood Park as the Eric Guy Kelly Playground. And then tomorrow, Wednesday, August 28th, council will be meeting at 9:30 AM for pre-agenda interviews for appointees to the Ethics Hearing Board and the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board here in council chambers. Our standing committee meeting will follow immediately at 10:00 AM chaired by Councilman Burgess. If there's nothing further from members, Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Just real briefly, I want to wish my mother a happy birthday. She's turning ninety-eight on Saturday.
Oh, that's so great. Happy birthday.
And I want to say-- I want to offer my condolences to you, Councilman Kraus, because the passing of your mother while you-- We were on break, and I don't know if we did a moment of silence.
You were all terribly kind, and I cannot thank you enough for your well wishes and your condolences.
So I'd like to offer a moment of silence for your mother right now.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Thank you. You were all tremendous.
Thank you. I just want to say real quickly, though, your mother was like a woman that like really was inspiring to me because he said--
Oh, God.
--right before she passed away that she-- He was in the middle of a campaign and he said-- She called me, she was moving out of her house and just said, "Hey, I'm moving and I need you to get my stuff to the place tomorrow." And I thought, "I love that woman. She's made a decision, she went."[1702.11][1702.11](laughing).
Most of you met my mom, I believe. Quite a pistol.
Yeah, yes.
Quite a pistol. Okay, thank you all very much. With that, may I have a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn our meeting? Oh, no, Councilwoman?
Yes. I can't be here for interviews tomorrow morning. I have a hearing, so--
Okay.
Like phone numbers or something, and maybe I'll set up some questions for somebody that comes in.
We'll work with the clerk's office to provide that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, so a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn our meeting, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.